Okay, I'd like to call it a word tonight's meeting of your city council. It's six o'clock on April 19, 2016. Stand for a moment of silence and a pledge hopefully led by Mr. Crail.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Crail. Ms. Johnson, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Mr. Jerome?
Here.
Mr. Rolet?
Here.
Mr. Crail?
Here.
Ms. Rich? Mr. Rothstein? Mr. Slavy?
Here.
Ms. Tillit?
Here.
We have public comments right now at this point, and limited comments to three minutes on any topic that is not on the agenda. Do we have any cards, Ms. Jones?
Um, no, sir.
Okay, if anybody from the audience would like to speak on item, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and again, three minutes, please.
Josh Hemingway, 1177 East Fifth Avenue. I just wanted to see if there was any advancement in doing the changes to this room. I know they were putting out for some, I guess, input on it, and I haven't heard anything back.
I think it's on the agenda tonight.
Is it?
Yes.
That sounds good. That's it. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Not on the agenda.
Okay, seeing none. Approval of the approval of the, excuse me, was your hand?
Yeah, Mayor. The shirts that I put up there are for the Relay for Life, which the Mount Dora Police Department will be participating in again. It's May 6 in Eustis, and this year they're combining Eustis, Taveries, and Mount Dora, and it's at Farron Park in Eustis, May 6, from 6 to midnight. So several of you will be getting the warrant, and we expect you to show up.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. Looking forward to that. Okay, we're going to have approval of the agenda, and I'd like to, I was asked if I can move a couple items real quick on there, because one of these people has to leave a little bit earlier. Under proclamations, built those items, I'm going to move to the top of the before the present, before presentations. If that's okay for the board, if the rest of the council agrees with that and any other items to be changed on the agenda type. Okay, seeing none, we're going to make a motion for, have somebody make a motion for the approval of the agenda with moving the proclamations on.
I move we approve the agenda with the change of moving the proclamations to the front of the agenda.
Thank you. All seven. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. First proclamation is for a Mr. Kaufman. He here? Mr. Kaufman here? Stephanie, I thought, is he here today?
He's asleep.
Okay. Sorry?
He said he was asleep.
Well, if he comes in, we'll slide it in, okay? And maybe words of us. The other, excuse me, the other proclamation is just a proclamation we're going to be giving to the American Lung Society, and that's being sent to them, and just commemorating a day that they needed to have, and so that'll be, that'll be done, that's already been done. So let's go right into our presentations, which is the fiscal year 2014-15 audit presentation, and Mr. Leinbach, please.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, as you noted, this is the comprehensive audit and financial report for the last fiscal year. I go right to the bottom line, and then I'll let Mike report that it's a clean audit, unqualified, which I think is great for the city.
Mayor, members of council, Mike Shepherd, Finance Director. As Mr. Leinbach said, it is a clean report. We do have, the auditor here is Alan Rickerfort, if you have any questions. Also, Mr. Bill Bland, he's the partner in charge, has also extended further invitation for you all to give him a call if you so choose on that. What I did do is I provided a little summary sheet in the back of where you can go to find different things within the audit.
Thank you.
So hopefully that will help you. And if you have any questions, we have Mr. Rickerfort here and or myself.
Okay. Any council members have questions about the audit? No questions, just a comment. That's a, that's a great piece of work, Mr. Shepherd and your team.
Thank you. It was a whole team effort, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Anybody else, Mr. Slavy?
I've got some questions on the finding section. I think that's where we jumped to. Yeah. So if you could comment, a couple of areas that seemed most noteworthy was the self-insurance issue. We can just get a little more color on that.
We have, our health insurance, we're self-insured, and as such, we're, for the last five years, we've been self-insured. Last year, it was noted that we should have an actuarial report between the end of the audit and the beginning of the conversion to BSNA and all that. It unfortunately got left out. We're in the process now of doing an RFQ for an actuary to come in and provide those reports for us going forward.
Can I piggyback on that?
Yeah. When you're doing a, when you're getting an actuarial, I know times we use the actuarials for the pension also. Do we have to get one done for that? I'm just saying, maybe you can just put the RFQ out, RFQ, whatever it is, for all the services at one time. Different companies do different things. Not all specialize in healthcare. Some of them specialize in the pensions, which I think we're using GRB, I think, Gable Motors down south, and they're one of the specialties down there doing that. There's others that do other post-employment benefits.
Okay.
So there's a multitude of skills out there, and some of them have chosen not to do certain ones.
Appreciate that.
I have, I have one question on that. Will this be an annual requirement? In other words, we'll have to do an actuarial report every year?
Yes.
So the other, there were some, several in the middle section of findings, and they seem to be, I want me to stop. I mean, there's a lot that's right, you know, so we're just only talking about the areas of improvement, so I don't want to be talking that. So it seemed like a little internal control and normal kind of things.
Yes, we're going to be showing those up for this coming year.
But I don't want to cut you out, because I don't want to, I don't think you have to labor on it, they seem pretty straightforward. The one, though, that I wanted to give a little more understanding on was the IT. So that one, because auditors, scope of work, you know, it seemed like they dug pretty deep on this, and they found quite a bit of opportunity. And, and I know that changing technologies and systems and the size of the city and a lot of things would necessitate different views on things, so I fully understand that. But if you could just kind of comment on what you think the best course of action is going forward?
I think we've come a long ways with our IT department. I think right now, we're going to probably have one of the best ones we've had in many years. It's, the manager is trying very hard to be proactive in security measures, and we have a newsletter that she gets, and she tries to get that out to everyone in the city so that everybody is aware of cyber attacks and scam emails that we may get, you know, so that people are going to be more focused on those types of things. You know, you don't want to carte blanche, answer something. I've had that experience myself, and I had them look into it, and they found out that it was totally a scam. So it's, there's a cost to everything that we do, and that has to be measured with the benefits that we're going to receive. I don't know that, we have firewalls in place, we have backup, and onsite and offsite, we have two separate sites, we do have the backup on, so in case there's an emergency, I think we're fairly well-covered. But we're continually looking at those different things, and obviously, we agree there's, there's things that we can do, and we will look into those things as we go forward and as money allows.
So I heard or read, and of course, I'm trying to read between the lines to get the real feel for it, was the whole onsite versus cloud storage, and I know enough to only be dangerous in that.
Maybe both.
That I just felt like there was not a closure on that. The, in, between the cloud and onsite?
Yeah. I'm not. I think we have better control onsite than we would through the cloud. I know the cloud is becoming very popular, and there are cyber attacks. One thing we did do with the change over the new software, the customers who call in, we don't, if they call in, they have to go to another number. We can't take those numbers anymore, because we're, we don't have to be PCI compliant, which is securing that information that we have. The other, the other outfit that's doing this has that compliance, and they have the firewall set up specifically for that. So that's, that's one area where I think we've improved in. But it's, it's difficult.
Let me ask you on that real quick. You were talking backups. Backups are done, I would assume, like in most places, on a nightly basis?
Yes.
And every twelve hours?
You back up, all everything gets backed up off your servers, and that stays in-house. I don't know if we're also referring to, we're talking about offsite, into a disaster plan? Is that something, that is something different than just the nightly backups? We have a Class V facility that we back up to. We own the facility, so we back up to that, and that's where the backup tapes and where the files are. We have looked into specialty houses that do backup, backups offsite, like in Atlanta, Texas, wherever, and the cost of those is fairly substantial, can be anywhere from $25,000 to $50,000.
I have a quick, how far geographically distant is the backup facility from the main facility?
From where Recreation is on Donley to where PD is.
Okay, so.
It's not significant, it's within the city limits, and it's in fairly close proximity, but like I said, the facility that it's in is a Class V hurricane.
Okay.
It can withstand a lot of, so the possibility of both going down at the same time, we think is highly unlikely.
Okay.
And then a couple other things that were outside of the finding section. A couple of the charts, the fund balances, of course, I love seeing those. I think we had talked, you know, a few times about seeing those more often.
And frankly, we're going to provide you a quarterly financial report, and one will be out within a week.
That's fabulous.
I'm almost done with that.
Right now. And then, there was a couple other things, if anyone else has questions.
I haven't.
Go ahead, finish. So I think, there was one, oh, I know what it was, in that one of the letters, we talked about Phase Four and Phase Five of the streetscape and a few other things as far as how to position the balances with that, and I just wondered to get a little more of your insight on what you think we should be doing.
I think for Phase, the future phases on the downtown, I believe that the general fund is going to have to contribute to that, to that effort. We do, I think Mr. Leinbach and Mr. Peters is working with the county to get money for the paving of the streets. We're looking into that, so that we won't have that, we'll be reimbursed for that cost. And, but I think the CRA, I don't believe will have the money, but the downtown CRA is really what I think makes Mount Dora what it is, and I think it, a Mount Dora address and, and, you know, it benefits every property within the city and anyone who has an address that has Mount Dora on it. Therefore, I think it's, it would be appropriate for the general fund to contribute additional monies to finish the project up.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
One of the things that we're looking at, we have quite completed the capital improvement plan for your review, totaling the figures, and once we do that, we'll have a better grasp as to our finances and whether certain projects will be financed with existing revenues or augmented otherwise. We're just not to that point at this juncture, but we will be shortly to give you a more solid recommended direction.
Okay, one more. When we did, when we selected the new auditors, because I know it's a new audit team, there was some discussion about the electric, the electric fund accounting, and I was trying to figure out where that was that was unique to Mount Dora, or was there any?
It's in the utilities section.
I couldn't find anything that was really odd.
It's just, it's just a countermeasure. We received, for one example, is we received money from Duke for the closure of the Crystal River Plant, $1.2 million. That's going to be deferred in, over the course of the next contract, which is coming up, that will be amortized so that it benefits citizens for that money that we did receive. The, the other thing is the power cost adjustments that we do. Charles Ravel is very familiar with that, and it's, you know, Moore Stevens Lovelace has had other clients that are electric company, have electric companies, so.
Okay. Thank you.
I just have one, just one question, this, it's got to do with separation of duties in a department, and I know you've got a small department, roughly, okay? And I've had small departments, and, and that's kind of a, and I know it's a legitimate finding, but a lot of times, it's an impractical situation, and to be able to do separation of duties when the one person is, is the person doing the entries and the person doing the backup and everything else. And I know you probably run into that as an auditor, you're running into that, and I guess you appreciate that, and you give a little, you got to note it, I'm sure. So, but anyway, just wanted to make that comment, and I know you try your best to do that, but I know it's sometimes really hard in a small, in a small office setting to be able to do that. You're correct. And we do the best we can with what we have, and for the most part, I think we do have separation of duties in the group that we have, but there are times when I make a journal entry and others aren't around to do it, I may have to post it. Same with our finance manager. If, she and I are the only two that can post, so. Again, just as a general comment, I take, you know, being a former VA and having the, you know, my school district's being, you had to go through the same CAFRs every year, and I take the management findings at the end, always took them as a good critique and a good honest criticism of the department, and something that you can use to move forward with, make corrections, and make sure your department's always running as tip-top as always can be, so. And not see anything drastic in any of the findings that were, that were made, that's detrimental so far, so, which is great. Again, commend your department on my job. Everybody, we appreciate that, and we'll continue to do our best efforts and. And I thank the auditor for not tearing up our finance department too bad there, so. Any other comments?
When you were talking about moving some money from the general fund to the CRA, do you have any idea what amount that could be?
Oh, no. You mean for the general fund to the CRA for the, we're not that far yet. That was just a general comment on my part, that the general fund may have to, we may have to use reserves that are in there for other items.
How can we make the CRA more self-sufficient? Quit spending this money. It keeps going, going.
Money funded because of, it's, it's based on the initial value of the properties within the CRA, so the difference is incremental values each year. We went through a period of time where that wasn't happening, so we're trying to do catch-up right now.
To follow up on Councilman Rolet's question, in that CRA, I don't know how the math works, but we own, we, the city, own some of those buildings. So for instance, and I'm not advocating, just using an example, but the property we own on Ninth and Baker, the city property, so if we were to sell that to a private entity, that would then put it into taxable.
Yes.
And would, you know, is that something that makes?
The base would be what we sold, and I, well, I was going to say Roseboro, but that's a not-for-profit.
Yeah. I mean, so we would, the basis?
The basis would be at whatever we sold it to.
Okay, so then.
And, well, no, but that would be the new basis.
Yeah.
And prior to that, it was zero, so we have that.
We have a little.
We have that incremental.
Right, and of course, just the value of the sale, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments?
No, we just recommend your acceptance of the.
Okay. Have a motion to accept the audit.
I'm going to accept the audit.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that's approved. I'm going to go back.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I want to go back to the proclamation while I have the gentleman here. I'm out here a little bit. Okay. Mr. Kaufman is, was so kind to make a contribution to the library, and there was a proclamation that was put out for him, and I'm going to read that right now. And whereas the WT Bland Library announced today that the replica of a 1778 warship that was donated to the library, and that the WT Bland Library recognizes Mount Dora resident and retired Mount Dora police officer, Mike Kaufman, for his talent and donation, and whereas Mike Kaufman spent more than 1,500 hours in just under one year and a half creating the replica of the HMS Victory, a ship commissioned on March the 12th, 1778 during the Seven Year War. Whereas the HMS Victory was built to become one of the most powerful classes of warships afloat during that time period, and whereas Mike Kaufman has built several models in the past which had wound up in display in corporate offices, boardrooms, private collections, and decided that he wanted to build a ship model and then donated to a public institution like his hometown library for everyone to enjoy. And whereas Mike Kaufman has fulfilled a bucket list with bucket list wish, I'll get that, to build the replica of a arguably the greatest warship of all time, the HMS Victory, and donated to the city of Mount Dora. Whereas at the city of Mount Dora and the WT Bland Library is honored to display this replica of the Victory. In fact, that wood, that wood from, the wood from the actual Victory ship in England was sent forward and received from a past refit of the ship. The wood was used to make several parts of the model, such as the anchor collars, anchor divots, the down bits, as well as other parts to incorporate a bit of history into the real ship onto the model. And whereas Mike Kaufman documented the progress of the HMS Victory replica over the year and a half built that started in 2014. The HMS Victory is still in service today at a maritime museum in Portsmouth, England, and now a replica is being showcased in the WT Bland Library located in 1995 North Donley Street, Mount Dora. Congratulations, and thank you very much for the.
You get your dining room table back now?
Okay, again, thank you very much. Was I saying anything?
All I wanted to say was, this was a bucket list of mine that I've had for years, and when you get to be 60, you realize that bucket list just gets a little longer, and you need to make it a little shorter. There was nothing honorable about it or anything else, I just always wanted to build this model, and if you've seen it, it's about four foot long. With the, with the display case and everything, it makes it about 55 inches. And my house is not that big, so I figured I'd find someplace that could display it for me, and I could enjoy it anytime I want to come to the library and see it. Appreciate it again, thank you.
Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you.
Mr. Kaufman? Mr. Kaufman, do you have a, do you have a workshop, Mr. Kaufman? Hello, Mr. Kaufman? Do you have a workshop, or have you been making this on your dining room table for a year and a half?
I, I have a workshop.
Okay, good. I was going to say.
And that's where I made the majority of it.
I was wondering if there were actual seed biscuits in the, in the hall there.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you very much for this contribution to the city. I know that future generations, my, my husband is a military history buff, and I know he'll be up there eyeballing it, and no, he may not make a copy in our dining room table.
But it's what libraries to do with what they want, and once they finish displaying it, if they want to donate it, or auction it off, or whatever, buy a computer or two.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go on to our, the public hearings and the community development block grant agreement, and this is going to be the second public hearing of the community development block grant draft application, and I'm going to try to get this thing into the proper order here, and we need to open up the public hearing again, and we are going to open up the, actually open up the public hearing for the community development block grant, and this is the second public hearing, and facilitator Kathy Baker from Jordan Associates is here to assist us, and so with that, Mr. Leinbach?
Mr. Mayor, city council members, as you noted, this is a block grant request for the Northeast CRA, and it's up for up to $750,000 for water improvements, specifically valve replacement project, as well as enlarging storm sewer on Grandview to facilitate stormwater drainage, and we would propose to also match that with CDBG funds, our funds, for the grant in the amount of $50,000, if you so approve. With that, I'd like to ask Vince to more detail explain that, and Kathy, please.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, Vince Sandersfeld, planning and development. We're excited with this particular project, because this is an opportunity for a small cities community development block grant for the Northeast CRA. We're excited about that, and some of the improvements may seem a little boring on the drainage and stormwater side, but it's an exciting project to make improvements. So we're blessed to proceed with the possibility of this opportunity. The details are all in the staff report, and we have a resolution after the next hearing, which will outline, like the city manager mentioned, the commitment to $50,000, which is allocated in our CRA fund, as matching money, or not matching money, as seed money to the development grant, and then the draft application is in your packet, which will be fine-tuned for the mayor's execution with the blessing of the resolution. So with that said, I would open the hearing to Jordan Associates. Kathy Baker is here today to outline the second public hearing process for the small cities community development block grant, neighborhood revitalization category.
Thank you. Thank you. It is my pleasure to come tonight, and please excuse my voice, since last week, it seems like everything that's blooming has been blooming in my house. As a CDBG, it is one of the most lucrative projects that the state has, and Mount Dora has been very blessed to be able to gain some of the funds over the past years. I've worked with Jordan Associates for two years, and we've been able to assist you with four different grants. This particular one is a. This particular one is a neighborhood revitalization, and as they have mentioned, it is for $750,000. And the $50,000 that the city is putting in is to gain you 100 points in having, excuse me, I apologize, it's 25 points. If you get 100 points for having the project pre-designed by readiness to proceed, where the engineer will have the project designed upfront. But the reason that we come to you with a second public hearing is because the first public hearing basically just tells you the options that you have to apply in, the categories. There are four categories. There's housing, there's neighborhood, there's commercial, and there's economic development. The neighborhood revitalization is where most, most of the time is, excuse me, is for infrastructure. And the water line main, water main replacements, and the valve replacements, or actually installing valves and those kinds of things, to assist in cutoffs, keeping from having to cut off the whole area in the time that something may happen. You cut off certain areas, and that way the whole area doesn't have to be shut down in the event of a, an emergency. So you have water main improvements, you have flooding drainage improvements, and that's the stormwater part. We also are presenting what the budget is for that $750,000. In the ad, we had the administration is $60,000, and that administration is for we, as the grant administrators, as well as funds that the city needs to use for publications that have to be done throughout the process of the grant, and those different kinds of things like that that have to be done. So there's part of the money that comes back to you.
Ms. Baker, wanna hear?
Paid for.
I just wanna interrupt you just one second.
Sure.
While we're still talking about the grant, I would like to have Ms. Elder go around and do the sign-ups here, because when you mentioned about the points, as part of our points, we have to have some signatures on the part one grant and the part two grant to be known. So I think you have to sign two sheets, if, or is just one?
There's one tonight.
There's one sheet tonight, okay.
One tonight, yes.
And if everybody, she's gonna bring around the sheets, if everybody would please sign that and help us get the points that we meet, meet the goal for, for the grant. Appreciate that. And I'm sorry to interrupt.
That's quite all right, and thank you very much for that. I should've mentioned that right up front. And it is only to just say you were here, and if you listened and heard, and you had the opportunity to give input towards the grant application. So the administration fee is not the full $60,000 that is part of the situation, that the city does get some of those funds. Then you have engineer, thank you very much, you have engineering, and this engineering is for the inspection part during the process of the construction. During the process of the construction, the engineers will go out there and they will watch the contractors as they're doing the work at different times to make sure that they are doing it on a basis of what the plans and specs have spelled out for it to be done. Then you have water line replacement, and that is those lines that we were talking about, that's $330,200, excuse me. And then you have flood drainage, which is stormwater improvements, of $320,000. That's the budget. That's $750,000 plus, and then the 50 would go in there. So you have five main service areas. And then if, when it comes time for the bidding, if the bids come in lower, we have made plans to have some unaddressed needs. There are areas that still need work, but what we've done, we've gone a little further to, to do the survey work in the area, and to have the engineers look at the area and prep it as if we're going to have the money to be able to go ahead and do that. So if bids come in under, then we can go ahead and modify the contract that you get from the state and put those in there and do another area. And sometimes we do have that kind of situation, when the contractors are really bidding against each other, then they come in lower, and we can put more work in there. We just do a modification and put that work in there. I believe that that basically tells you what we're doing, tells you what's going on, and so I, do you have anything that you would like to add? This is Mike Tivell, he's an engineer on the block.
The only thing I think that's different from an engineering standpoint, as in the description, is the staff has asked us to increase the size of two of the mains from six to eight, and I think we needed to say that.
Oh, yes, we do. I'm sorry, I forgot about that, and that is a very good point, because the six inch was not going to be sufficient, so moving it up to the eight inch is important, and we want to make sure that that, we will make those changes in the application. And the engineer has justification for that, so that'll all be fine, and that will be what we will be applying for.
Anybody on the council?
Yes, I have a question. The $50,000 that the, that the city will sort of put into this, if the bids come in significantly lower than what we have estimated, and we can continue to do the additional unaddressed needs, and we still don't need all or part of that $50,000, can that money then go back into the CRA for use in, for other projects along, you know, like later in the year, or fixing up the Martin Luther King House, or whatever? In other words, does that 50 have to be allocated and spent?
That's a very good question. There are two parts to that. If you don't spend it, and we get to the end and there are funds left, we would, we would have to reevaluate the application at closeout. And because you get points based on that $50,000, you get five points for every $5,000, so you get 25 points. So what that would happen is you would be rescored at the end. Now, if you're rescored, and there is someone that is very close to what you are at the time of the actual scoring, it could move you to where you would be below, and then you may have a, a situation of having to pay back some funds. And that is something that we watch very closely, and we don't let you get into that situation. The Department of Economic Opportunity, that is the funding source of this, they would like to see the funds be expended during the process of the grant. They want to see things going as, you know, as we're going along. If it turns out that there is, I mean, if you've got unaddressed needs, you really shouldn't have any money left. I mean, you know, it really comes to the point that we would spend everything. But if, if it does come in that they're very low, then, you know, we will definitely keep your staff and, and the people that we'll work with, with Mr. Peterson, everyone, and Mr. Layla. And with Mike being constantly involved, we would definitely keep, you know, a watch on all of that. And I'm the one that usually keeps the financial spreadsheet, and as we are requesting funds, I watch and make sure. Now, also, Mount Dora is one that is on what we call reimbursement, where the invoices come in, and you pay them, and then we get reimbursed from the state. So it's not a situation of, you know, them coming in, you turn the invoice into the state, and then the state pays you. So it's, you know, the funds are expended. You don't get them all at one time, you can just get them for what you have.
Okay, thank you. That makes, we basically don't want to have a bad report card at the end of this so that they will not give us what we need the next time, too, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other comments from council? Any comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, now I close this part. This part, part one, is closed, and the public hearing portion is closed. And do I make a, now do the vote on part one separately?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And we have a motion for approval, part one, of the community block development grant. So moved. Second? And can the roll call, please?
Mr. Grayle?
Yes?
Mr. Rollet?
Yes.
Mr. Slavy?
Yes.
Mr. Hillitt?
Yes.
Mr. Jerome?
Yes. Okay. We're going to open part two, the City Council Public Hearing on the Adoption of Resolution 2016-21 to approve the community development block grant draft application, and for city grant commitment of $50,000 from the necrophunds and authorization for the mayor to execute and submit of the grant application to Department of Economic Opportunity. Mr. Landback?
Well, this is kind of the second phase of implementation. We recommend approval of the, of the grant application, our commitment of necrophunds, and your allowing us to proceed with your signature thereon.
All right. Do we need to, since this is a resolution, we need to do a title reading or anything also? That's your practice, I think. Okay, okay. Resolution number 2016-21, a resolution authorizing the city of Mount Dora, City Council, and municipal corporation authorizing the chief elected official to make application to the State of Florida Department of Economic Opportunities, Ball City Community Development Block Grant, fiscal year 2015, providing an effective date and for other purposes. And that's the resolution by title, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. Okay, any council people have comments on this grant? Mr. Grayle?
Well, it just makes so much sense. We're spending $50,000. If we get $750,000 of other money, that seems like a pretty good plan. It's not sexy stuff, water lines, and, and storm sewer, and drainage, and so on and so forth, but it's absolutely necessary.
Yes, sir.
And I, I think this, this $50,000 is a very prudent investment.
Thank you, sir.
I agree. I think when you're on the receiving end of having your water shut off, it gets pretty sexy pretty fast, so, you know. So I think it's, it's a no-brainer.
Any other comments from the council? Anybody from the public wish to comment on this item also? Seeing none, I will close this portion of the public hearing on part two and ask for a motion for approval. I move to approve the Resolution 2016-21.
Final second.
Okay. And a little, Ms. Johns?
Yes. Mr. Rollet?
Yes.
Mr. Hillitt?
Yes.
Mr. Slavy?
Yes.
Mr. Grayle?
Yes.
Mr. Jerome?
Yes. Okay, that passes. Done, we're good to go?
Thank you so much, and we will be giving you your final application, because they go in Monday.
Okay.
The final ones will be, will be, yeah, we'll take them in. We deliver them up there ourselves. We don't take a chance with any kind of mail.
Well, thank you very much for all your help on this, and also yourself for the, for the engineering work.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Okay. If we go back on the agenda, I forgot an item, and approval of minutes. And I did catch that. Thank you. Anyway, there was, Ms. Johns pointed out that she already made a couple corrections on there, in case somebody's got them. Mr. Slavy, about him withdrawing his support on the rate resolution, so that was added in there, and also was added a vote where it had names, but not the yes and no's. That was, that was included in there. And that is it. So any other, any other items that need to be adjusted on the minutes?
Just one quick question on that. Are we gonna get a revised page of that? Because I can't remember. I think we all, the, the vote that just had the names and then it was blank, I think everybody voted yes, but I'm not sure.
That's correct. And the fully signed copy will be on the website and in our files.
Okay.
For permanent retention.
Can you just burn me a copy?
Be happy to.
Thank you.
I'll email it.
Okay, I have a motion for approval of items one and two. Move to approve as revised.
Final second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Bearing none, approved. Okay, thank you. And trying to get out of order again here. We have ordinances. First reading and adoption of ordinance 2016-15 to amend land development code and code of ordinances. Mr. Root?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance number 2016-15, an ordinance of the city of Mount Dora, Lake County, Florida, amending section 3.4.16.13 of the city of Mount Dora Land Development Code by deleting the cross-reference code statement pertaining to public arts to revise section 6.1.11 Design Standards applicability pertaining to art in public places, to rescind and delete in its entirety section 6.14 Public Art, and to create a new sub-part four of chapter two, part eight of the Mount Dora Code of Ordinances to reestablish the Public Arts Commission with certain powers and duties, providing for conflicts, severability, codification, and setting an effective date. And that's your ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, fine, thank you.
I, yes, just, this is the final reading, I believe you said first reading.
I just, this is final reading. And I had my, and I had these new lenses put in. I have to, probably get a refund on that. Okay. That is the final, I thought that was the final reading, I said first, okay. So anyway, any other comments from the council? Any comments from the, the public? And can I have a motion for approval, please? I think we didn't get that yet.
Move to approve.
Second. Okay. And so we asked the public to comment. We will have a vote, please.
Okay, Mr. Hillitt?
Yes.
Mr. Grayle?
Yes.
Mr. Slavy?
Yes.
Mr. Rollet?
Yes.
Mr. Jerome?
Yes. And that passes. And next one is the final reading and adoption of the ordinance 2016-01 Comprehensive Plan Text Amendment.
Mr. Mayor, ordinance number 2016-01, an ordinance of the city of Mount Dora, Lake County, Florida, amending the goals, objectives, and policies of the future land use element of the city of Mount Dora competency plan by amending policy 4G12 Employment Center, providing for transmittal to the Florida State Land Planning Agency, Department of Economic Opportunity, providing for conflicts, severability, and an effective date. And that's your ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, fine, thank you. Is there any comments from the council members on this? I believe there hasn't been any changes to this ordinance either. I hope.
No, this is the-
Any other comments? I'll do this right way. Can I have a vote?
This is where we allowed limited multifamily residential.
And it eliminated the-
Only for a pub.
Correct, right.
Only in a pub.
I know those are pubs out there, by the way.
Pardon?
Everything goes through as a pub out in the, the innovation district.
Got it.
Okay. Correct, correct. Okay. Can I have a motion for approval on this?
Move to approve.
Second. Okay. Anybody from the public wish to comment on this ordinance? Seeing none, back to council, and the others. And Ms. Johns, can I have a vote, please?
Mr. Hillitt?
Yes.
Mr. Grayle?
Yes.
Mr. Slavy?
Yes.
Mr. Rollet?
Yes.
Mr. Jerome?
Yes. And that passes. Okay, we did the proclamations already, and new business, item one, the approval of the 2016 Mount Dora Half Marathon scheduled December 18th. Mr. Landback?
Mr. Mayor, City Council members, my understanding is this is similar to what has been done in the past. It's a request to conduct this half marathon for December 18th, and the staff has recommended approval. As delineated.
Okay. The council, have any comments on that? Have a motion for approval? Move to approve. Second. Okay. Anybody from the public wish to comment? Name and address?
Vicki Blake, 613 North Grandview Street. I am the race coordinator for the half marathon, and I just wanted to make a comment about the procedure with a race, and this is 13.1 miles. People plan in a year in advance. For me to follow the rules, I wouldn't be able to market the race to approval. We have 888 people registered for 2016 already. Something we may want to look at in the ordinance, I- Something we may want to look at in the ordinance, I've been breaking the rules all these years because people, we're not going to wait for me to get it approved. We open up registration way in advance. I just wanted to make that comment, and maybe, I'm not sure what happens on the sixth year. We already have our dates for the next three years. I'm not sure how the ordinance reads. I'm a little confused with it. Do I have to go before council again on the sixth year? This is our fifth year. I was kind of under the impression that once we're five years, we're kind of grandfathered in, so maybe I can get some clarification from...
We can get that for you.
Okay. So, we slated for, we had 220 this time last year. We have 888 now. We could possibly have 2,500 for December, and I think our streets can handle that. I just want to thank you. I'm fine with putting the permit in, again, for the sixth year, but know that we'll probably have 1,000 people registered, and that I'll be going against the ordinance, which says that you can't market a race or market an event until it's approved. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. This is a little different than the art show, because people do tweet for the year in advance.
Appreciate that, Frank.
Okay. So, thank you.
Is there a difference between opening an event for registration and marketing it? You know, I don't know, because people approach you...
No, everything's done online. Once you open up registration, you basically market it. You're on Facebook, you're tweeting, you have running clubs contacting you, military discounts.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
So, we have, Mr. Hughes, have a comment?
Yeah, if I can clarify so that we can put all minds at rest, so to speak. She is correct. This is the fifth year. Once the fifth year goes by, then any event that's five years or later becomes an annual event that's pre-approved already, just like the other ones. The application process, you have a year in advance in which to do that. So, next year, you enter into that golden arch, so to speak, where as soon as you put your application in, it's already a five-year activity. You can then start registering and not breaking any more rules.
Okay. I don't want to break the rules. This is a phenomenal event. I mean, I think part of being, attracting more corporations to come here from the Innovation District, you cannot ignore the health of a community. And running, we're in a huge running boom right now, as big as the '70s was, the running boom in the '70s. It's just the people are, we include walkers also. Since we put the permit in, we never would limit anybody. If somebody wants to walk 13 miles, I don't know why they'd want to do that, but we were happy to give them the medal, and we want to take their money, and the course is open, that's fine. But it's something to think about when we have events that can stand on their own. We're really proud. We have lots, we have made money the last two years, putting money back into it. We're getting a custom finish line for this year. We keep getting more, giving more goodies to the participants, which they love, their bling, you know, medals. So, we're just reinvesting in the event, making the city look great, and, you know, I don't see it stopping. In a saturated market, our event was up. There were many races within the 50-mile radius that were down by 400 participants. One of our racing buddies in DeBary, they were down 400 participants from last year. We were up about 120. So, we have a special place to compete for sporting events, and I think in talking about attracting businesses, HR departments look at the health of a community. They look at things like this. The obesity rate, the smoking, you know, how fit are people? Our trail, you know, the bike trail, all these things are contributors to attract companies. They look at that.
Thank you very much for all what you do on that. And, you know, the only thing I have against that race is I have to get up at 5:00. Is I get 5:00 in the morning to be there and volunteer for 6:00.
I know.
And the racers who do decide to do a lot of walking, the volunteers don't leave until after, until after the last one crosses the line, so...
I know.
But it's a good thing. That's really great. It's a great event.
We welcome the volunteers, so we have about 200 for next year. Most of them come from the Mount Dora High School FFA program, and they made a donation of about $2,500 that really made a huge difference for them. Huge difference for funding, some of the things that they do. So, thank you again.
Yeah, I'm just going to say, maybe Chief O'Grady, you know, this looks like a good candidate for a warrant for the relay for what?
Okay.
Pay for all of her past soft flops, and I'd be happy to give her my shirt, if you want me to.
Okay.
You're not going to get out of that warrant that easy, Mr. Jones. You're going to get a warrant.
You can't get out of it that quick.
You'll be served.
I'd be happy to sponsor anybody, you know, on the council. Personally, give you a free entry for the 5K. We also have the shorter distance to 5K.
Again, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we didn't get a motion on that, did we? Okay, all in favor?
Oh, wait, this is...
Okay.
Go ahead, hold up.
Any more comment? No, let's do, yeah, let's do the voice like we have been doing. Go ahead.
You said voice. You mean roll call?
The vote, yes.
Okay. All right. Mr. Rolet?
Yes.
Mr. Slavy?
Yes.
Mr. Hillitt?
Yes.
Mr. Krail?
Yes.
Mr. Jerome?
Yes. Okay. Approval to authorize city staff for Z with inter-local service boundary agreement with the City of Eustis at their request. Mr. Lombak?
Mr. Mayor and City Council members, as you are aware, we've received a resolution from the City of Eustis proposing an inter-local service boundary agreement involving a number of entities in the county. This will be a somewhat prolonged process under state statute. Tonight, we're just making this aware of the mayor and council. On the May 3 meeting, we will ask that you provide in the interim any items you'd like discussed for the ISBA negotiations. We have 60 days to respond to this resolution. If we don't, we will be default, not at the table, which we strongly, of course, would not recommend. So, we will be coming back to you May 3 with a resolution responding to the City of Eustis, and hopefully with your concurrent delineating items, we would like to discuss and inclusion of yours, of course, as we go forward.
And I would, Mr. Root, you have any comment on this with...
No, that was what he said. This is very preliminary, and the best thing to do now is to get your own ideas together.
Yes, sir. Okay. Does any council members have any comments on this item?
From what I understand, timing is of the essence here. We talked this afternoon, appreciate your time, and we've got to go strong and go hard, or we'll be surrounded.
That's right. Mr. Krail?
Yeah, this is a blatant land grab by our friends and neighbors in Eustis. This cannot stand, and everybody in the audience and everybody in the Mount Dora community needs to understand what Eustis is trying to do with this proposal. Would cut off our potential for growth and probably make Eustis somewhat bigger than Jacksonville if they were to succeed in this. We really, really, really have to be aggressive on this, and my suggestion is that we take the stance that every square inch that they want to include, that we want to include as well, because I would give up nothing. Not, nothing. This is, I mean, in many ways, they are partners and friends, but this is a land grab, and there's no other way to describe it.
If people in the audience haven't noticed, I think the negotiations on this item's going to be very vigorous. So, we're going to be, we're going to gather all the information we can so we can, that we can be very, hopefully fruitful in the negotiation process as we move down the line on this thing here. And any other comments from the council?
And a question was, has Eustis contacted us before their meeting or in any other way?
My answer is no. No contact at all. We just got the letter.
So, thank you. And so my comments leverage off of that information, and I must say that, Mr. Krail, I cannot agree less with you, and I can maybe even agree more with you. Where you pick, whether it's the U.S.-Canadian border, whatever it might have been, the old 54, 40, or fight, if it's State Road 40 or Fight, 44 or Fight, whatever it is, I am not at all pleased with the actions of Eustis to do this. We are investing our heart, our soul, and all our energies around this wonderful Wolf Branch Innovation District, and when you look at that map, what you have seen there is we're going to do all the work, we're going to spend all the dough, and they're going to put, and you know, just let your mind go where it is, if it's all the kind of housing, or all kinds of development, or all the things that we have worked hard to not have, and they're going to plop it right there, take all the tax revenue, and have all the control of it. It does not feel good, and I think, I think my sentiments should be that they're the same as Mr. Krail's, and of course, he's done it more eloquently.
Just a, this is going to be one of those issues, I think, you know, when we look at things that the city, this is going to be, this is going to be one of those things that this whole city needs to be behind, and be behind the council, and hopefully we get the support of all the city behind us, and when we start going into these negotiations, and we need that strength, believe me, and to get this thing, because we're, I'm sure it's not going to be an easy thing, and I can't picture it being easy, and Mr. Root's going to probably as in make a lot of money just go around here, so there you go. So, can I have a motion for approval?
I move to approve the, to, I move to approve to authorize city staff to proceed with the ISBA negotiations with the City of Eustis.
Second. Second. Anybody from the audience wish to comment? Come up. Name and address, three minutes.
Josh Hemingway, 1177 East Fifth Avenue. Since I really don't understand this, I'd like to know, is this something to acquire this land, that we're going to have to purchase it, or is it just establishing boundaries? Or how does that work?
Well, we usually don't answer to make, but go ahead and ask, and the question be answered on that, please.
From my vantage point as administrator, the idea is to establish an area where you will provide services, first of all, and you will also have the right of annexation with some exclusions of current state statutes, such as, right now, without it, you have to continuous to annex, and you also cannot create an enclave. So, it makes it easier to annex, and you really have the, you're in the driver's seat, and we would not have any ability to annex in the future if that ISBA were not ours.
So, it's in our best interest around where the Innovation District is, is to get as much of that as possible, then, right? All right, thank you. It actually comes a lot closer to our boundaries than that.
I would encourage anyone in the audience who is sort of confused about this, if you look at the map, that's as part of the packet, the pale blue on the eastern side to the east of Mount Dora is the parcel that we're concerned with, correct?
No, it's a golden color, I believe.
Pardon?
Gold. The brownish, like a beige color.
Oh, well, a pale sort of shaded area, if you look on, if you look on, well, okay...
Yes, that grayish area.
Yeah, the grayish area at the bottom to the right, bottom right area. It doesn't even make geographical sense, because it's really contiguous to Mount Dora. If they, as I said, turned that smile upside, turned that frown upside down and flipped it on the other side of 44, it would make more sense for a Eustis acquisition, but so this is something, as the mayor said, that the council and staff are going to need 100% support from the, from the city as we go forward and negotiate them, because this is important to our future.
Mike Masterson, 7887 Crosswinds Way. As I departed, like, some of Dora this evening, had to come to this meeting, there was construction going on on 44, proceeding from, I guess you'd call it the corner of 44A and...
44.
44, going down to our...
44A, 44B, and... Peace to hell.
The alphabet soup confuses me, but I'll just say that the road in front of us that goes to the land and goes to Eustis, there was construction going on that could be construed as clearing the land so that they could put in sewer lines, because I understand sewer lines and about the feed store. So, the question is, as prefaced too, if they take actions that, I like a better term, give them some sort of infrastructure that would, might support their argument, but look, we already did this, does that have any merit, and do we have to take legal action to say, hold it, guys, you're not doing that? Could you help me with that? Thank you.
Right now, that is the county road over there, or is that state? That's State Route 44. Right. So, and I'm not sure what's going on, but just my general impression, real quick, looks like they're prepping the ground to put some sod down, and that's my general impression right now, because there's no other real big equipment out there other than what they're doing. Just little soil tilling and removing some dirt for sod.
I hope that, but, you know, someone might want to ask a question or two.
We will.
Thank you.
I think at this point, I would urge, you know, instead of all of us playing a what-if, that we should, you know, let our staff go forth and, go forth and prepare, prepare our side of the negotiations, and...
Is there anybody from the public wish to comment? Okay, seeing none, we're back to the council, and we have a motion in a second. Okay. And can I have the vote, please?
Mr. Hillitt?
Yes.
Mr. Rolet?
Yes.
Mr. Krail?
Yes.
Mr. Slavy?
Yes.
Mr. Jerome?
Yes. Next item is approval to authorize the city staff to complete design and construction of a new dais with the estimated cost of $18,750. Council is through a request for proposal for architectural services relative to the city hall security and some further chamber improvements. Council chamber improvements, not your chamber.
John, Peter, to Public Utilities Utilities and Booked Tended Architect. Back in December, I believe it was, Mr. Slavy made a comment at one of the meetings that he didn't like the fact that you're all on a straight line, can't see each other, and that was kind of the beginning of the discussion. There was also some discussion about the fact of lack of seating in here, that if you had any controversial issues at all, people had to be outside. It's part of the effort. I came up with six different layouts, three of them utilized the two doors, and three of them had a single door in the center. The top part of the whole concept is sightlines, ADA compliance, and more importantly, the Building Life Safety Code. Anything we do has to comply with that. For instance, this area right here, part of Building Life Safety Code, we have to have 44 inches clearance for somebody to get by. In the end, what I presented to you all are two different proposals. I looked at a raised dais. Mr. Rolet, it's not because of you, but we have to be seven foot six inches to the ceiling. If we raise a dais, we encroach into that seven foot six inches. The second problem with the raised dais is getting a ramp up to the dais without impacting the seating. The two proposals before you, the single door proposal has 90 seats. Currently, we are capable of getting about 72 seats in here, so that would be a net 18 change. What we are also proposing is that on evenings that we have a large crowd with the, ultimately with the monitors that we're talking about, that there'll be a monitor in the conference room, and staff will be in the conference room so that there'll be more seats available to the public. We will be able to monitor meetings, some to monitor, pun intended, and then we would come in when our item comes up on the agenda. The design works are changing, it's fairly complex, so what we're proposing is to deal with the dais at this time is a fairly easy project for me. Basically, the dais would be built in 11 vices. Each one of your areas would be basically 36-inch wide wedge, and it's bolted together, and then we put a sheet on the outside, and it would be on a curve, and then the city the, the city manager, the city attorney, and the clerk would be on a wing coming out. On the drawing that I provided you, you will see a dash line that goes from the corner over here toward the mayor, that's a sightline for the worst seat in the house, and the worst seat in the house would be able to see every one of the council members. Good portion of this wall here is actually non-structural, so it would be removed, and so, I think the, what I'm recommending is the one-door plan ultimately, but the dais is the same on either plan, so, you know, if the architect comes in, and there's a problem, like there's a steel beam in the center of the wall, doesn't show up in any plan, then I have to go back to the two-door plan, but that's our recommendation at this point.
I have a question, a question. In Plan B here, where we keep the existing doors, because that's extra money to have to knock holes in walls and stuff, it shows over here on one side, my right, yeah, my right, still just two seats along this part of the wall. If we got rid of the tables, couldn't we get more, on the right-hand side, couldn't we get more seating in there?
On that side?
Mm-hmm.
The cameras not have their seats at all. Those tables would be out, there would be seating just like on the other side.
Now, this is on Plan B here, my copy, it shows, it shows on this side, there's four chairs, and then in the middle, there's a whole bunch, and then, and then there's just two on this side? I know, what I'm talking about is keeping the existing doors, but couldn't we still get some more seats if we, if we took the tables out and just put chairs?
Unfortunately, not, because we have to maintain ingress and egress to that particular door for emergency purposes, and in fact, you see a notch of three seats off the front row to accommodate the podium and traffic around.
No, I know about that, I'm just talking about that little, where Mr. Hughes and Chief O'Grady and everybody are saying, if you didn't have the tables and the big chairs, and you put in regular chairs, couldn't you get three or four chairs?
Chris Tillot?
Plan B is the number on both sides.
I beg your pardon, mine is, mine only shows, this was in my packet, that's why it shows only two, but I'm, I got mine cut off, is that?
There you go.
Sorry, everybody, sorry, sorry, never mind, I see it, perfect.
We just wanted to confuse you.
I had a bad copy.
Doesn't hurt.
So, I was just thinking, there's two there now, so, okay, perfect.
She spent all day trying to argue this thing tonight, too. I'm so sorry.
I apologize. I have one other, one other issue, though, is that because this room is used for other boards as well, and I know that on the Planning and Zoning Board, contractors or, you know, petitioners may need to have spaces to spread out their drawings, will there be accommodation made to have maybe foldable tables to go in between this little arch, so that they could, you know, move the podium or whatever, and so that people have, like they do now, they can lay their table out and petition the board?
In a previous employment with City of Austin, my friends, I designed their council chambers, we went from seventy seats to a hundred and ten seats in there, and we put, we shifted the room from straight on to putting the dais in the corner. The dais is on a curve, what I did, I designed a table to fit that curve in front, we would do likewise here.
That was my question, yes.
So, thank you for seeing this together, so I embarrassingly say, I should have known better when I asked an engineer to get involved. I merely was thinking that, and maybe it's just because my toolbox has mostly duct tape and zip ties, that I was just thinking, we just, I'll stand up for about as long as that we talk to you, and move the darn tables at an angle, and we'd be done. And so, and it saves eighteen thousand, and I appreciate that in the long term, this might be fine, and it's a good idea, I didn't know what a dais is, I went to public schools, we had tables. And so, I, maybe I'm just, like, just completely baffled by it all, but I don't see the need to spend a lot of money, I just think, putting in some more chairs or something, and that's all I meant, it's just hard, it's just hard in a meeting, when you're trying to talk, you know, to lean over, and then your fellow council members, to be kind, have to back off, and it's just...
And it's like, "Yeah, you're in my way, I want to see two".
Yeah, so, and maybe, now, having said that, this might be the way to go, I don't, I don't know, but my first blush is no, and that's just how I'm wired, I guess.
Let me just, let me just go there, if I can share, I did look at tables that are readily available, that are angled, the problem was, it doesn't fit in this room, because the angles are sharp enough, that they end up being a half circle, and they end up coming out into the audience.
I think what he was trying to get at is, maybe if we had a couple of thirty-degree inserts between two position tables, like, like the hole in the middle, a thirty-degree insert, and then the table, and same one the other way. And it is very nice, you did a very good job here, I really like it, but like Mr. Slavy saying, this is going to be quite a bit of money, and I think we need to spend it on the people's street sidewalks and the maintenance of our building, yet this time, maybe down the road, but very, very well thought out.
And we're taking care of, I know we're taking care of the streets, we're taking care of the sidewalks, that's for sure, and in this, my own personal, this room does need a little bit of facelifting, there's no doubt about it. It's been, I don't know how old this room is, and how old the chairs are, I've been through, in the past, I've been through three different dais reconstructions for different school boards, and believe me, the before and afters are well worth it, it's well worth the, the public opinion, it's well worth the, you gotta remember, this is where, this, this room is where our public comes, and where everybody comes and sees us here. And, and if you go into other cities, large or smaller than us, and that have more modern facilities, and it looks a little nicer, and, and I think it sets, it sets a tone, it sets a, it sets an image for what we are, and, and I have no problem, believe me, and going ahead and trying to go ahead with this, you know, this effort. What I'm concerned with, we have two council members missing, I just now, you know, thought about that, too, and, and if we should maybe table this until maybe our next council meeting, so we do have, hopefully, a full council here to take the vote with it also, and for that, because I really would like to see, have everybody have input on, because it's their council chamber also, and then I think that'd be fair, if we can possibly hold this off for another, you know, for another one, so if anybody wants to make a motion for tabling, I would accept that.
I'll move to table it, until the next, next meeting, or can we settle it on the next meeting?
Yes.
On the third?
Second.
Thank you. And all in favor, a table?
Discussion, right?
Not on table, motion or postpone motion, we don't need to, and for the next, actually, it's postponed until the next, until the next meeting, and we can do it at that point. So, if I have a vote on that, please? We just do a voice for all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody against? Me.
You don't want to table?
Mr. Slavy's going to kill it now.
Yeah, I wanted to kill it now, but that's okay, I mean, that's how it goes.
So, anyway, so that'd be, that'd be postponed until the next meeting, and we can take it, we discuss this a little bit more, and have a vote on it then at that point, appreciate that. The last item here is the approval of the city council concurrence to provide street-sweeping services in gated communities assigned, they hold harmless agreement drafted by the city attorney, and this is something that's been long overdue, but does anybody have any, Mr. Black, please?
Mr. Mayor, city council members, staff is recommending proceeding as you've just delineated, based upon the fact that the, the street sweeping is a part of our national discharge pollution, I can't say all that, N-P-D-E-S permit, and it, part of the, of the process is to keep contaminants out of the waterways, contaminants from streets, run off that sort of thing, the dirt and debris, and so, to, to not do it everywhere we can, it kind of defeats the purpose, and we recommend proceeding based upon a whole harmless and doing a complete job.
Have a, council members, anybody want to comment on that?
I think, I think it's another no-brainer, I think we should sweep the streets, we're all, we're all part of Mount Dora, and if arrangements can be made in the gated communities to let the street sweeper in, then if those communities hold the city harmless, if they bump a curb or whatever, you know, then, then I think that's a, it's a win-win for everybody.
My other question on that is, I know it's going to be on a scheduled basis, and it'll be, it'll be part of a schedule, and however many weeks or whatever between they would come into a community, would the communities, the gated communities also have a, the ability to, if there was something happening in the community, that if they asked the street sweeper to come in for a special sweep, would that be part of the service, or would that be a, a fee that they would have to pay for the, for something extra if it was needed?
For consistency reasons, it would be a regular service. For instance, Lakesmouth Door had a street party out in the middle of the roundabout, and there's a lot of debris, and you would give us a call, and we would come out, rather than having to get into the waterways and all that, it's an opportunity to clean it out, much like we do with downtown, when we have an event downtown, we're out there, you know, Sundays and Mondays, making sure it's all cleaned up.
You just, for the sake of clarity, this would just apply to dedicated streets, and not to, would this, okay, let's say, we use Lakesmouth Door, because we're under construction on part of the, the things, and where we do have construction going on, I guess, at what point would the street sweeper come in, because we're actually, we've got construction going on throughout the whole community at different times, but, I mean, major construction likes going on in phase, I think, four A or four B right now, four B?
My bias would be that we would handle it as an internal policy, that when we take over the sewer and water and the infrastructure that where is possible, or that would be the point that we would start maintaining the streets.
Okay, great, that'd be fine, thank you. Have a motion for approval for this?
Don't move.
Second. Anybody from the public wish to comment on this item also? Seen none, anybody else from council?
Well, I, I think this is very important, particularly at Waterman Village, they have lots of mature trees, and acorns and so on are a real safety hazard at certain, on the streets are a real safety hazard at certain times of the year, so I, I think this is a real public service, particularly for the Waterman Village community. Thank you for considering it.
Okay, can we have the vote, please?
Mr. Crayo?
Yes.
Mr. Slavy?
Yes.
Ms. Tillot?
Yes.
Mr. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Jerome?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. City Attorney update, just real quickly, just a couple items. There's three pieces of litigation that I know we're handling right now, well, actually, two we're, we're handling, and the third is insurance counsel, and I wanted to mention something about that. The first is a foreclosure action that was turned over to us, it was a code enforcement order lien, and, and it's, the defendant is Annie Mae Sims' property, and a few details about the property, I can get those to you, but we're moving towards final judgment on that, to acquire the property for the city. There was a second case, there was, there's a quiet title action that was filed this recently, a week or so ago, against the city, by BH Eighteen Properties LLC, who acquired some property in a tax deed so, and there was a twenty-seven-thousand-five-hundred-dollar lien, once again, code enforcement, plus, the city had spent two-thousand-five-hundred dollars with a recall, Chief O'Grady told me, to clear the property, so we've, we're defending the city in that case, too, to see what we can recoup from what the city has as a fine, and what it's expended for cleanup costs, as a nuisance abatement. And the third piece of litigation is the Medallion Homes litigation, and I had a really good talk with Ms. Sutton yesterday about it, there's a motion for summary judgment to be heard next Tuesday, I think she'll be getting some communications from both she and I, or us together sometime in the near future. So, that's the report on litigation. The other thing I'd like to discuss briefly is something that the city clerk and I have been conferring about, and that is a training session, I'd really like to have a training session with you all, I've emailed you about it, and although there's a need for you all to certify each year on your financial disclosure forms, that you have, that you've engaged in this statutory required training, which some of you already have, I'd also like to have, and I could help you get there, whether it's going to a course, like, like Council Member Tillot has, or through the web, if you want to do it that way, there's ways to do it, but beyond that, I'd like to have a session where we talk about how we operate in terms of quasi-judicial proceedings, and, and open meetings, and, and some other areas of the law, but I think interaction would be helpful, and that's, you know, I've got two goals, helping you get certified, which is a concern of the clerk, too, and also having some interaction in the way things that aren't necessarily on the online courses, or in the courses that the league offers, or whatever, there are things that I've seen throughout the years, that are nuances, that I think would be helpful to interact about. So, the clerk's trying to help schedule a time where everybody can get together for, I'm thinking half a day at this point, but, and you could spend a whole day on a lot of these subjects, but, you know, it's ridiculous, so half a day where we could get together and go over these various areas of law, and that's all I've got for this evening, Mr. Brereton.
Thanks, obviously, that would be a Saturday.
Whatever works, go to the order, I mean, you know.
I'm assuming that we could, you know, I mean, focus our, to make the best use of our time, to focus on those issues, those items, those learning experiences, where we can't get it any other way.
Exactly.
And just, and then you can tell us, "Hey, you need to go take this course, here's it online", or whatever, and then we're going to concentrate on doing, like, land-use agreements, and quasi-judicial, and whatever, where we really have a hard, okay, perfect.
Absolutely, I mean, I know that if you, if you go to public, sometime I'll train with Pat Gleason, who's the best at the world, or ethics, well, Lyndia Dash, she's the best in the world, you know, you're going to get a certain set of high-quality training, but it doesn't, it doesn't get you the interaction, and that whether if, and the, the type of training I'm talking about would get you. So, that's, that's what I'm thinking.
That's great, I think we're probably all in agreement on that, so if we can, just whatever dates are, I guess, that you, you feel, that you would like to throw out to, Ms. Johnson, I had that really neat little program, that doodle program, whatever it is, that we all can get on, and...
Meeting grabbing?
No, I think it's called doodle, it's called doodle.
I'm going to defer to the clerk on that, I have seven daughters, and we can't get together for Christmas.
She'll help me out for that, so.
You pick a day, she'll send out to...
Whatever, I'll work around it.
And then they can confirm their attendance for you at your Christmas program, no problem.
Would there be a chance that we could schedule this training during a weekday? That it's training for council?
We could.
It's fine with me, I'm retired, so, I mean, I don't have a, you know, I don't have any other job.
He's retired. It's Ray Rich and Mr. and Mr. Slavy, I think, are the two councilmen that have a full-time jobs.
Maybe they could make, I, I don't know, I'm asking.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think I can, you know, work something out, as long as, if it's a half-day thing, as long as we try to make it, you know, at the beginning or the end of the day, so I can work the other part, that's nice.
We could even go late in the day, and then go a couple hours into the evening, if we have to, you know, like, start at three and go to...
Or two, or whatever, six, whatever, and it's fine.
Okay, what's enough?
Why don't you throw out the dates to her, and then work together, and she'll get us back, and then we'll arrange, arrange something that we all can agree on, that'd be great.
I appreciate that, that offer to do that. Anything else? Mr. Groot?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Lineback, City Managers update?
Yes, sir. In this case, I wish I'd gone ahead of the city attorney.
Oh, I did, I did come up.
Because, no, because I have two recommendations for you, for offers for you, I talked to the Florida League of Cities, and they're offering a legislative, two thousand sixteen legislative overview recap, if you'd like to have a session for that. That's the first one. The second one is, I did contact Lynn Tipton from the Florida League, during my interviews, and subsequently, from a couple of our elected officials, we talked about team-building, that sort of dynamic enterprise of council action, they don't do that, but I have a couple of their contacts that do provide that type of interacting trading, that sort of thing, and wanted to know if you would be interested in doing that as well. That's why I wanted to get in front of the city attorney.
I think that, I think that would be a...
I think that, I think that would be a terrific idea. And that's not replacing what Mr.
No, no, not at all.
But in addition, I, I think that would be time well spent and I appreciate your efforts on that.
I had, my only comment on that, I think I mentioned to Mr. Leinbach a while back on that, was the, I understand having a session just for interactions. This could be an interaction session. And we can combine, maybe kill two birds with one stone, is to, if we set up a goals and objectives workshop, which this council, then we'd be all focused, so we want us to be focused on one issue, instead of just trying to, you know, we're just trying to be talking generalities and we use our time productively for goals and objective, which I know this council has been very lax in trying to get done in the past, and talking about just strategic planning, things like that. And this could be one of those sessions where we could do something. And I think give you some information on that from Mrs. Grody, Grotty, I think her name is from.
Grotty.
Was it?
Cro.
Okay. From the, from the league also. And to, so I'm good either way, but I think if we can focus in on a, something that's going to end up with something at the end of it, other than just all of us getting together and shaking our hands at the end of it, which we do anyway, hopefully at the end of a goals meeting. And because we're going to, we're going to have to work together. We're going to set goals. We're going to have to work together to get that done. And so we might be able to accomplish two, two birds with one stone, so on that one.
Okay.
It's up to you. And that was one of my items here to work on that also.
Okay. Okay. If you'll just let me know and we can organize that, I could put out like a scope of what would be, if you're wanting to do both, obviously it'll take more time. I would recommend also a half a day. If you're going to do the team interaction and goal setting both, it'd probably take that long, in my experience.
Yeah, I miss most goal settings. You're going, you're looking at usually from an eight o'clock through a three o'clock timeframe for the goal setting.
Okay. So whatever you wish, we'll make sure we do it.
Appreciate that. So, any other, oh, sorry.
Is there a timeframe on that, that we're thinking about, or?
Well, at your convenience, I mean.
I would say is, within a few months, I would think. Try to get it accomplished within not too long of a period of time.
No, I know I've said it before, I got two speeds, stop and go. So can we get it done? Because we might as well just do it in November when we get a new council, if we're not going to wait two more months. I mean, that's, and I know it's a little smart alecky, but you know, if we're going to do it, let's do it. Can we pick a date and just, you know, make it happen?
Well, maybe we could do the doodle process again. But I agree, Mr. Slavy, the sooner the better. We have been kicking this around since.
Yeah. See if you can accomplish maybe both. And then if we need a double session with goals, maybe we can work something out. Talk with them and see what you can come up with and how you want to work it. And then come back to us with some dates and then near future, so to speak.
In the, in the past, I had an evolution that worked quite well. You know, we had envisioned, like you have from Mount Door, as a general guideline, specific goal setting by the elected officials, then implementation by department directors. It was a cycle every year. And it worked quite well.
Good.
Because we want to make sure we do what you want us to do and you represent our folks. So I would suggest you entertain that concept in the future. One last thing, Mayor?
No, I'm sorry. I think that's excellent. I think we should have, you know, 2020 hindsight, we should have had a planning session, the first or second meeting after the new council. And we should, as this council, we should set that date for the next, you know, November, whatever, so that it's set.
Yes, sir.
That we start right away.
Yes, sir. That'd be fine. The last thing I'd like to mention, Mayor, is one thing I've heard a lot is parking from everywhere I go. We have a lot of information. We have a lot of data. We would like to entertain and talk to, and we have talked to on a very general basis, an outside consultant to put this all together. A report that would delineate the options and come back with recommendations from the least costly, the most quickly accomplishable, to the long-term more costly. We think we can do that reasonably cheaply. So if you have no objections, I'd like to proceed and obtain a scope and let you know and get your approval to go forward, once we have all the information together.
I know that when parking first raised its ugly head, that the CRA board.
Yes.
Our advisory committee was sort of, you know, that was their major meat for the, for the, for the year. And I'm wondering if that, that should, that whole parking thing should go through them to, before it comes to council, to, I don't know, be hashed out or looked at, et cetera, et cetera, and then, and then come here.
Well, we're the, we are the CRA board.
The advisory, the advisory committee, the advisory board. Okay. Yes.
And Sanders fell planning director interim. They have for the last year, since last April, been running kind of the same track on parking data analysis research. Some of the members are here tonight, so they can back me up. And I think they're ready to put a report. They want to see the draft, all the data, the studies, the kiyashas, and put it in a pie chart.
Fine. Great.
Well, we can, okay, so are they ready for?
They're ready for.
Okay. So in interim, after, after that report, if you feel it's necessary, you want to still bring in a consultant at that point, then you can.
Well, the consultant would need to prepare that.
Yeah.
The consultant would need to prepare that report.
I got that.
That date is.
Okay, you want that being?
Not an issue. Not an issue then. That'd be great. So if you have no objection, we'll put that together and put it before you, the scope and the outline, what we propose to do, make sure it reflects what you want and kind of put it all together and a plan of action.
Great, okay. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Great.
That's all I had, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Council comments?
Yes, I'm on a roll tonight. I'd like to address the state of the city document that just came out and tell everybody that I think it's probably one of the best formatted and hopeful. And it was just a five-star job, as far as I'm concerned. I particularly liked the inclusion of comments from each of the advisory committees. That just gives everybody the impression that we work collaboratively together as a city, where we value our citizen board inputs. And Mayor, you did a great job. Thank you very much. It was, it was excellent.
Thank you. I'll give you 10 bucks later. Thank you.
From my heart.
Thank you. Ms. Slavy?
Yes, I have about 17 items, but I'll only bring about three today.
Ah, you're so sweet.
So, and the first one was, I wanted to get an update from us on our efforts on the city manager hiring, where we are and what we need to do as a council.
Yes, sir. The advertisement went out this week. It is now posted. And the process of accumulating resumes is just in the beginning phase. I don't know what you did in the past. I think that Slaven is proposing to put those together, call out those that are qualified versus those who are not, and then provide recommendations to you as to the candidates.
And with that, I think we need to act and say that we approve that idea. I guess last time they went through at council level, all the resumes. And, and then, I know the process was, you know, it kind of moved along, but I think, for me personally, I feel bad because we put out an advertisement that we didn't vote on. And while, while I think it's pretty good, we didn't vote as a group to say that we required that the city manager live inside the city and just, and just say, yes, that's what we want. And we didn't talk about whether the master's degree was required or not. And, and maybe they're not large items, but it's just for process. I just think it's important for us to make sure that we agree as a council that those things are important.
Okay.
So I don't know, just getting everyone's comments or thoughts.
Email.
Yeah. Well, well, I mean, for me, I'll just throw one out there, master's degree. We got the guy down in Eustis. I looked on the website and from what I can tell, he didn't have a master's degree. I'll tell you right now, I'm going to give the city manager of Eustis some pretty high props for being on top of the game. So what I'm saying is that maybe we can, when we cast our net out for candidates that when we say have to have a master's degree, that we have some basis behind it. I just, I would, and it's okay if I get voted down. I would have voted, no, don't require it. But in our process, I didn't get a chance to say, no, don't require it. And the same thing for the residency. I know some people, and some I know very well, think it's very important that the city manager live within the city. And I don't agree with that. I believe that you reduce the number of candidates by having restrictions. I can understand that the person has to live within a certain distance, but, but I'd like to have been able to vote yes or no. And we just kind of, we just kind of got ahead of ourselves and got those things in there without us saying yes or no on, on an issue. And I'm not mad at you, I'm mad at us. And I'm not really mad.
No, I agree.
But I'm just saying, I think we should, I don't know what the word is, but vote on it.
May I make a clarification?
Go ahead, go ahead.
The way I read the advertisement for the master's degree, there is equivalency with, that could be substituted for a master's degree. I think Cheech's experience, I will review that again and send an email to you to clarify that. But I, I think there's some wiggle room, if you will. Not absolutely, I think it's preferred, master's degree, but it could be substituted with other qualifications. But I will let you know tomorrow.
All right. Well, I mean, I think for me, I don't mind losing on a vote, but I just think you should be out here. So I move that we remove the requirement for a master's degree.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I know you have motion. Is there a second for the motion?
It can doubt not a second, too. It's.
Well, but we don't know whether that's a requirement or the equivalency or not yet. Can we, do you have that available to look up online real quick, Ms. Johns?
Yeah, I will draw it and we can talk about it next time.
I think equivalency is very important because you can't buy experience. And as far as someone living in the city, I think they need to have skin in the game there. They will be part of it. And then that's a problem we've had in the past. It was too much on the outside where, you know, the people running the city ought to be living in it.
There's, I agree, we can go with preferred equivalency, however you want to on a master's degree. And I think we're just, you know, using different phrases there.
Yes.
A requirement for a master's degree because we might be getting somebody with a master's degree in basket weaving and we don't want that person. So, but they hold the master's degree. So I think that has to be an appropriate master's degree, I think, for what we're looking for, a preferred naturally, if you can, or equivalency, which means years of experience in some areas, so which is good. And I have no problem with that. As far as the city, but then.
I mean, my motion dies without a second.
Yeah, it never had a second, right? Yeah, that died. And so anyway, the, as far as the city requirement, I see both sides of it. Okay, having a skin in the game, but also I look at it from the standpoint that, let's say the city manager Eustis wants to apply for the job, okay? And he's already living in the city of Eustis. And, you know, we're going to have him sell a house in Eustis and buy a house in Mount Door, okay, just a couple blocks away, let's say. And because you can just go north of 441, south of 441, and you're in, you're the city limits, okay? You're switching to city limits. I can, I can post on it, hit the city of Eustis, okay? And I think somebody wants me to do that here tonight. So, but anyway, we can do that. So I don't really lean too much for the, for the, you know, living in the city. But I think a mileage requirement, I think is, I think should be, reasonable distance from here that, that they live, that they can get to work and everything. We have, you know, Mr. Leinbach, you know, as interim, we did not place that requirement there, thank goodness. And because that's kind of tough when you're just going to come here for a short period of time and require residency. And sometimes by limiting it to a, a residential area like that, you can limit, and I think you mentioned that, also limit the qual, limit the number of candidates you can get and because they, they might have a preference. They might already own a house in the area somewhere. So anyway, I don't, I don't agree with that part.
I believe Ms. Johns has the advertisement, so she can clarify the language as opposed, as far as the master's degree or equivalency, whether it's in there or not, and maybe.
Years of progressively responsible experience in administrative managerial or staff capacity in a large municipal organization involving the responsibility for the planning organization, implementation and supervision of varied work programs equivalent to a master's degree from an accredited college or university with major coursework in public or business administration.
Yeah.
I don't have, I don't have an issue with that.
No, I don't.
Now, as far as, okay, so we're really talking two subjects. Okay. The residency requirement. I'll go to the mat with you, Mr. Mayor, on the residency requirement. I think it is absolutely essential to have the skin in the game, pay the taxes. You're a full member of the city. I, I just have a real problem with people who say, well, I'm, you know, I'm a Mount Doran, but you, yes, you are, but you're not if you're not 100%. And I think the person who comes here, I'm assuming is not going to, you know, want to live in Eustis or already have a house in Eustis. And if they do, then put the house on the market and buy one here in Mount Door. You need a Mount Door address. You need to be paying mileage rates. You need to be 100% part of the city. And that's my, that's my view. So I would not vote to relieve, to relieve that requirement.
Appreciate that comment. Okay, you had some other?
Well, I mean, maybe we should just pick one and, and, I mean, I've got the, I understand what Ms. Till is saying about the skin in the game and I don't disagree entirely. I just, I just think when, when someone's hired as a city manager, they should have the, the ability to go after the end of the day and go have solace somewhere and hide. And if they want to hide in a nearby community, they should be able to. And, I mean, I worked at Disney and, you know, I didn't want to live in that land, so I lived somewhere else. But, but it's not important to me. But I think more important is the process. And I think someone should make a motion that requires it and then vote it affirmatively, rather than it be squishy. That just seems, to me, better.
Okay. I move that we retain the requirement for the city manager to live in the city limits of Mount Door.
I second. Okay. We have a motion second, and I am going to ask for the public input on this item.
This is in the bottom of 41 East First Avenue. I agree with those of you who say that we don't need to have a city manager that lives in the city for a whole lot of reasons. I would remind you all that Vice President Joe Biden commuted to Delaware when he had a job in Washington, did it successfully for years and years and years and years, every day, and represented his constituency extremely well. Secondly, I think, and more importantly, you limit your, the number of candidates that are qualified. I mean, you might have a great candidate within 30 miles of here. And what if you had somebody on Lake Shore Drive? They're not in the city limits of Mount Door. So I'm thinking that you do some reasonable commuting amount. There's also the issue of, it's not easy to buy and sell a house. I mean, depending on when somebody bought a house, then they bought at high tide and they're selling at low tide. And I don't think we should ask somebody to lose $100, $150,000 possibly to move into Mount Door to be a city manager. And if that's the requirement, and they say, I can't afford to lose $150,000 to be city manager of Mount Door, then there's a good candidate you've lost. So I just think you limit yourselves way, way, way too much by making them live in the city of Mount Door. And I don't see what the skin in the game is. Okay, so they pay taxes, big deal. What is it that they're really affected by that much? I mean, I don't get the skin in the game. I don't know what skin they have in the game all that much that would require them to live in the city of Mount Door. That doesn't mean that they like the job any less, that they'll take the job any less seriously. I just think that is a requirement that, that just limits you all in your selection way too much when there may be qualified, better qualified people outside the city of Mount Door.
Mike Masterson, 7887 Crosswind Way. Couple of things. Number one, you all referred earlier a, a decision due to the absence of two council members. I think the same factor should be applied here. That's you. That you should consider the input of your other council, if you have all council members before you rewrite and adjust the specifications of the job, so that we don't have a discussion two weeks from now of, I didn't get to participate, okay? Just an input. From the other standpoint, my perception is that city managers lead a bit of a vagabond life of, and Mr. Delainbach can maybe able to confirm that, that thought, of living in different places as their, as their employment history has dictated. And as such, the expectation that they have residency in the place where they've accepted employment is not gonna be a surprise to them because that's kind of what they've been experiencing in their, in their whole career. And as such, I don't think they'd be, they'd be so upset if that restriction was placed upon them. That's all. Thank you.
Josh Hemingway, 1177 East Fifth Avenue. I think this discussion has come up many times pertaining to the city managers and the directors, and I'm kind of on the fence in some ways about it. You know, basically getting the best candidate is important, but when you talk about having skin in the game, I, I don't believe they should be living out of the county, in Orange County or anyplace else. I'd like to see them in the county if they're rested in the county and spending the money in the county. From where I understand, the taxation works, it circulates back to this town. So I think, you know, if we're going to make it a mandatory position for the city manager, it's something, it's always been done in the past. I don't know if we should change it or not, but I think if we're gonna look at it from that point, we need to look at all the directors as well in the future, make sure they live in the county within some sort of a radius of the town, a designated radius. That's just my opinion.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public on that? Hey, you have a motion and a second for, to, do what again?
To retain the requirement for the city manager to live in the city limits.
Okay. So is that...
You have a vote?
Yes.
Ms. Tillot?
Yes.
Mr. Roulet?
Yes.
Mr. Crell?
Yes.
Mr. Slavy?
No.
Mr. Jerome?
No.
Okay, so that's gonna be retained?
And then the other, the other one, that's where I found it, was in the, in the attachment. It said, "The equivalent of a master's degree from an accredited college or university with a major coursework in public or business administration or closely related field is required." So that, that one, we're okay with keeping, or?
We're okay with keeping?
Keeping that in there. I mean, similarly...
It says equivalent.
Yes, so similarly, I'd like to just...
Make sure.
Make sure. Can we vote on that, or?
Oh, yeah, okay. You wanna make a motion?
Mine's gonna be negative, so maybe, you know.
We may make a motion. I always make a positive, make a motion to positive.
I move to remove the requirement of a master's degree.
It's not a requirement.
It's not a requirement.
It's not a requirement.
Or, uh, no.
You're saying the equivalency.
Well, here, the equivalent to a master's degree from an accredited college or university with major coursework in public or business administration or closely required field is required. So I think, Mr. Brute, would you like commenting on that?
I don't think that's a requirement. I think it leaves broad discretion to determine what's equivalent and what's not equivalent.
Okay, then, no, no, I'll make my motion. I move that that sentence be removed from the description.
Okay, we have a second for that. That leave an education? Does that leave any...
If we wanna take a vote, somebody's, somebody has a second, right?
Right.
Is somebody seconded in?
No, not yet.
All right, well, I'll second it so we can have a vote.
So my point just is, similarly, you cast a wide net, you get more candidates. When we talked about the city attorney, we talked about a wide net. There is a candidate out there somewhere in my, my world that has one course left before completing the master's degree and that sort of thing. But more importantly, the person who reads this, a reasonable person in my view that reads this advertisement that says, gosh, golly, I am the best candidate from Mount Dora, I'm gonna fill out my application tonight, aw, crud. Master's degree from an accredited college or university. Okay, never mind. And so we lose out. But if you want one, that's great. I, I think there's a lot of very qualified, wonderful people who do not have advanced degrees, and I'm just a wide net caster.
Okay, you have a motion second, and any from the public wish to comment on that? Any none, back to the council? Other comments? Have a vote, please.
Sure. Mr. Slavy?
Yes.
Ms. Tillot?
Yes.
Yes, to remove the sentence?
Yes, yes, remove.
Yes, to, yes, to remove the sentence. I mean, well, I'd really like to...
No.
I know, okay, I'm gonna vote yes to remove the sentence.
Judge Judy, yes or no answer, come on.
Yes. Yes. Uh, Mr. Roulet?
Yes.
Mr. Crell?
No.
Mr. Jerome?
Yes.
Can I make another motion now, that it be tweaked, that we add, we add...
Advise it.
All right, I move that we add appropriate language to show that the individuals have had some coursework in the areas that are, I don't have it in front of me, so I'm just winging it.
Public administration.
Or a closely related field. I just want to add some, some words in there that says that they have had some formal, some formal coursework in areas that would be like a business administration or a closely related field. I mean, I don't know how it's gonna sound, but I just think somebody...
Bring it back to Mr. Slavy again, and just real quick, because I don't have that in front of me right now, but I think all we're looking at then is just basically the same sentence as we eliminated, but just eliminating the, uh, the master's degree portion of it just about, sounds like.
Really? We'll take two more weeks.
You know, I...
We wanna do it right.
Lester Crell? A couple months ago, we were looking for a city attorney.
Right.
And the whole world thought that the qualifications had to include the highest level of certification. If that's the case, and I, and I think it should, I, I agree with that, there are plenty of excellent candidates who have master's degrees at least, who will be candidates, and I don't think, we're not gonna hurt ourselves, I don't think there's gonna be any shortage, and I don't think we should lower the standards. I'm okay with the equivalency thing, but, you know, I don't know. What's your, what's your qualification limit? Fourth grade, eighth grade, high school, GED? We need the best there are, and those folks have a combination of excellent experience and are well-educated. It's not mutually exclusive, it's a package.
Well, okay, and I agree with what you're saying, that, however, I think when we get into this, and I would have to go back and defer to people on the council before, when they reviewed 100 applications, out of that 100 applications, how many of them had master's degrees or equivalencies at that point? Because you're getting, we're gonna be asking for city managers with experience, they're gonna be applying for this job.
Slaven will have a process to cut the field.
You got it.
You don't need to look at 100 applications, you're gonna look at 12 or something like that. You can always look at more, but that's, looking at 100 applications, it's not something I'm gonna do.
No, I'm gonna take...
That is why we have a highly paid, highly respected search firm to, to do this stuff. I don't know why they did it that way last time, but that's a time waster, and I don't have that kind of time to waste. This is stupid stuff, guys. This is really, really stupid stuff.
But we're getting into this... Mr. Mayor, you know what? I have never called anyone's ideas stupid, and...
No, I think you call your ideas stupid. I think the, the process, yeah, but I...
I apologize, Mr. Slavy, I'm just a little frustrated.
Well, I'm frustrated, too, that we put out a bid without us voting on it. You know, we, we said that one of the two things the charter requires us to do is hire an attorney and hire a city manager, and we put an application out, shame on us for process, we did it wrong. So I'm being a little prickly tonight that we gotta vote on a few things to make sure that we all agree. I really, in the end, don't care. I carry a couple of master's degrees, I've worked with lots of people with advanced degrees, there are a lot of people that are qualified the other way. It doesn't matter probably in the end, but we should go through the process. I've got people barking at me saying that they should live in town, should not, master's degree or not. I got my opinion, but I think we as a board should decide and put it out there because it's our responsibility to do this.
Good, 200% the...
And really, in the end, a lot of what you said, though, I wholeheartedly agree, but we just want to vote up or down, in my view.
There is, hey, we voted on the one thing, eliminating the master's, that was all we even voted on, correct? Eliminate that. So that's, that's done. That's been, that's been eliminated, right.
And then Ms. Tillot started to make a motion, I'm not sure if she finished, to add appropriate language to indicate, that's my word, that the individuals applying have had some coursework, and that's all, that's...
Degree, related degree, or, you know...
Public administration, right, it's public administration, you know.
But then again, we're getting, again, we're getting to this thing here, and I agree with Mr. Crell on one item. We sit here, and we're nitpicking, and nitpicking, and nitpicking, and let's look at the big picture, let's don't look at the color of the carpet, let's look at what we have to, what we're looking to hire a professional into our, into our realm here. And, and I don't think Mr. Slaven is going to bolster that, that charge to us. I had conversations with him previously when we were looking for, for the interim, and we were talking about the process that was done before, and he could not understand either the, the 100 application thing. He says it was, by, by his words to me, totally ridiculous that that process went on, that they did that. His recommendation to me at the time, and it's up to the council again, when we get to that point of it, of the process, he's only recommend, all he needs to send us is six. If we can't agree on the six, he sends, then he can always pull more in at that point. But I would have to think that if there was 100 applications last time, we're gonna get a decent amount of applications again for this position, and, and I'm sure when they go through a cutting process and you go through your hall fires, and just because you're, they're gonna have a certain amount, and he's gonna have tiebreakers, I'm sure, which ones. He's gonna have people with master's degrees, and I'd be willing to bet you any amount of money, every one of them is gonna have master's degrees, they're gonna have high levels of competency in the jobs that they have or serving already, or he's not gonna send anybody to us. This is his job. He got, no, this is, this go around is a freebie to him, but to a certain aspect that is free. It's not just, it's not totally free, but it is free, what he's gonna be doing, renewing the search and doing certain things. There's gonna be other costs that he's still, any travel costs, things like that are still gonna be borne by this, by this council. So just keep that in mind, it's not a totally free process.
And I can help with the 100 applications. Public record requests were being made, and all the applications were released. We had candidates pull out. We had a lot of problems with that last city manager search, because people in the community were individually calling the candidates, and that's why there was 100 applications out. That was never intended as part of the process.
But I think the process, though, the, I think that the applications came here. Once they, once, if Mr. Slaven has them, they're not public record at that point. If he keeps them, if he has not...
They are, he's working for us.
If he has not released them to us yet, are they public record?
Yes.
If he's got them in his, in his possession?
The public records.
Yes, they're public record. He's working for us, we're paying him.
He's, he's, that's right, he's, he's your alter ego.
Okay, fine. So, but anyway, that, that was the case, and I appreciate that comment, I really do.
I just thought it might help.
Yeah, it does. And, but anyway, the, I think the ones that, even though he has 100 applications and the people want, and PS because of public records, records request, I feel that we have to set a, a number that we're gonna get to us for review, that we're going to interview and look at at that point. Leave that to his choice and not our choice. And, and I appreciate what we're going through here, but again, I'll go back, let's say forward, let's stop some of the nitpicking that we're looking at on some of these things. And I agree with Mr. Slavy, maybe we should have had that brought to us to, to approve, but I'm gonna go back to, I think, a number that Mr. Delainbach has submitted to the, the council members, I think, a few weeks back, to review the, the language, make any corrections and make any suggestions then at that point before it was released, and so, and, you know, just leave it at that. But we need to move, we keep, I don't wanna keep holding these things up and moving them, and I don't get this, I wanna keep this council moving forward, and just see what we can do to, to get us back on an even keel. I wanna get us on an even keel, and we have to go, go keep going forward. Hope that's answered some of your concerns.
I just, you know, I just, I have constituents, people bend my ear, and, you know, I just need these things voted on.
So are we, are we done? What else we need to vote on for this, for this advertisement, if anything?
I think we already voted to remove that, so...
Okay, that's...
We need to, if, if the council does reconsider...
I'm satisfied with the, the way...
With removing it?
The way one item stayed, was voted on, and the council voted on it, the other item was voted on to remove it. Is there any other specific item? I just wanna, I don't wanna tinker with words and, and the thing, just, if there's something really pressing that should be added or removed from that, I'll entertain that motion to do that.
Though, what I've heard, let me restate it, so I make sure I understand, the retain the residency requirement was voted to...
Yes, that was voted...
That's, that's a given. I think from Councilmember Tillot, we could make a clarification as to requiring what degree, a business degree, public administration degree or equivalent. I think that's a clarification we could make unless you...
That's, that's fine.
I, I think that's relatively minor.
It's fine.
I think the other, that Mr. Slavy was talking about was the, the master's degree. I'm a little confused as to what you want to do with that, or leave it as an equivalent. I'm a little fuzzy there. Other than that, I think everything is pretty well set.
I think the people that are gonna present the package to Mr. Slaven are gonna include whatever education they have and experience, so obviously, the packages that he gets, he will filter them down. We received 103 applicants, but Mr. Slaven filtered it down...
Right.
Before we actually started our process on it. So I'm sure that's what's gonna happen this time, yeah. But he presented to us everybody that applied, so he took his position, I'm sorry?
He said, I'm sorry, we didn't have that.
And he should filter down a lot closer to what we need versus, you know, giving us everything that they applied. He did his job, but we don't need the 103 applications. So if a master's degrees, if there's two or five with master's degrees and all equivalents, obviously, they're gonna be in that pack. So we're not discounting that master's degree, but we're taking that in consideration as being higher than someone with less. However, if they've got 10 years' experience in business administration and city management, they're gonna be...
Maybe I can help here. Now, this is not legal, it's just policy, but really, if, at this point in time, the instructions to Mr. Slaven can be given, that you're not requiring a master's degree, but you're looking for something equivalent.
Preferred.
Preferred, and, and you are adhering to a residency requirement, so if that's a deal breaker for any applicant, that they should know it upfront. That, there's nothing that we really change in what's been published, that's just clarification given to your consultant for his screening process. So I think you've done what you've set out to do, right?
And the, just, I wanna clarify another conversation I had with Mr. Slaven, we're talking about the, about the process that went on last time, and with the 100 applications, where, like you mentioned, people calling, public record, and people calling the candidates. Mr. Slaven said he was going to control that, that got out of his control, and he will inform the candidates for them not to speak to anybody, residents, reporters, anybody, about their applications, and they would have to go through Mr. Slaven for that. And this way, they, they can retain what they, because they don't really need to talk about their, having those issues and being, taking themselves out of the process, a qualified candidate being afraid of the process at that point. If I just said something violates my, you have something there, I apologize, but I think Mr. Slaven's gonna exercise a little bit more control in the process with the candidates in the future. So we eliminate some of those issues that went on in the past, and that's not casting dispersions, it's just that there was, I think, some, just like we are here right now, we're, you know, we're trying to do what's right, and, and I think every council person, past and future and present, is just trying to do what's right, and, and we, I think we can do that. So are we, are we done with the, with that, with that little issue there?
All right, that's one.
That was just one?
Yeah.
All right.
Six to twelve. Until we get a planning session, I'm figuring out, I'm going to keep bringing items up, so feel free to get a, a long-term plan together. So the other item is, we recently had an advertisement for an economic development slash CRA position and that's fine. And I, and I see this, you know, and I know I get a little excited, I say this with the most trying to help attitude, is when I look at things that have happened in the past where we've said, hey, we don't have a grant writer on staff, we've had, do we need an assistant city manager, do we not? Economic development, the tsunami of growth that's coming and we're not ready, we have no succession planning, we don't have people and departments ready. So last week, when, or last meeting when I talked about the idea of having someone in to help us, I, I have no, I have no vision or view of how it should be. I just see that we're a city that's between small and growing, that has an opportunity to position ourselves structurally in the best way possible, whatever the best way is. I clearly do not know what that is. But I, I just want to have us not miss the opportunity to do that. So I don't know if, if we should put on the agenda, you know, for next time to talk about the possibility of hiring an outside firm to help us or to do something, but I just don't want to let this opportunity go.
That was referring to your last comment about, about hiring some kind of an outside company to come in to assist with a structural review of the inner workings of our city.
And, and if, and if it makes a hearing that you make stand up and, you know, just completely off, please, that's okay to tell me, I'm just trying to.
I already have plans to do it. I will say this, that's fine, I would suggest that you all direct, direct us how you want as a, as a council. It's going to be expensive.
Mm-hmm.
I have one quote of $92,000. So, and that's just, just off the top, you know, that sort of thing, but we can certainly look into it in detail and get back to you if you want us to do that, certainly. And don't take it, we don't take it, you know, we take it most objectively, so don't worry about that at all. I mean, I think we're pretty lean and, and solid system, so I think it'll be a fun.
And, and yeah, and I'm not even saying like from a, from a spend less perspective, very well could be, well, we got to spend more, you know. I know when we interviewed Mr. Laimbach and I know, and I, I don't know if it's some of my conversations with him, but I know you have a tremendous background, you've been around while that you're here, while you're here as our interim, and one of the reasons why you got us having a vote, I'm sure, so, which, which is great. And, and, and I don't want anybody to ever step on your toes and I know you're, you're going to be here until we get a, you know, until we get a full-time manager. And, but at that, with that said, you have certain skills and if these are within your skill range that you want to do yourself, that's fine. And I think, and I hope not speaking too much for yourself there, if you're, if you're, if he can handle that in-house and do what you want to do in-house, because I'm looking at, when you're looking at a, I think that kind of structure, you're not just looking at it, well, this is something where we need to hire right off. I think you're looking at some kind of a structure that maybe you, is ideal for the city and, but we can't achieve it yet until we get the monies and the, the mileage rates and the different things that we need to afford the different positions that we want. But if we're looking at $92,000 for a, you know, for a, just for a consultant, I'd rather spend $92,000 and hire the economic development director at that point. And, you know, just, just go for the bucks and pay for the person at that point. But I think, I think he knows the direction that you, that you mentioned, I think, and I guess as a council, I would assume that we're all walk the same kind of direction, some kind of a structure. And to look at our internal, how, how we are placed and our management structure and the different lines, I don't know. It's, it's sort of like in the military, we had, you know, our, our, the operational rosters, where they, if you were able to call them T1E rosters, where we used to have in, in the military, where every unit had its own, you know, set, set things and if you had vacancies, you could fill them, you don't have vacancies, you can't hire until your, that position's, you know, at least approved by the, by the council or your organizations. But.
Isn't there some guidance we could get from the Florida League of Cities on that? I mean, I'm, I'm, skills and qualifications to be able to help us work through this without going out like that. And, and I'm sure, just like you were saying in the middle spec, on, on a military operation, I'm sure I would think that the Florida League of Cities would have something similar. Because we picked our brain, I do, I go out looking for different information and I would think that we're not the only city that's looking for, you know, a structural analysis, if you will.
We can certainly make inquiries and find out.
And that would be free, I believe, since you're a member.
I'm wondering if something like this could be accomplished as an outgrowth of, maybe when we start having a goals workshop, that this, some of this may come, come to light as a result of that and say, well, you know, maybe this is, I'm, I'm just, I understand that this is probably the, an opportune time to have, you know, we're sort of, we're in between city, you know, permanent city managers. And you are absolutely right, we have heard, you know, we're not, we're not ready for the growth that's coming, blah, 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 we have to do this. So I think it would be an opportune time to get maybe some outside eyes to look at, at, at our organizational structure. And again, we're not talking like we have too many FTE here, not enough, but like you said, we may need more in this area, whatever. But maybe we would get a better understanding if we really do need this, once we've gone through a goal, a goal-setting exercise. Maybe not. And one other thing, I was kind of, you know, thinking about this, this type of thing myself and, and so I was doing the Google and I found one city, I think in California, that hired a firm that was $46,000, so, which is considerably better than in the, in the 90s. So I, I'm not sure whether there's a range.
I'm sure.
That we could find.
I'm sure it answers both.
Right.
What you want to accomplish.
Okay, so you understand about what I think what's, and I think we're, I think in agreement, Mr. Krill, you got a comment?
I, I certainly agree with Mr. Slavy that that's something we ought to engage in. But I'm thinking that in the space of about four months or so, we're going to have a new permanent city manager. And I think it's worth waiting, you know, that this is important, it's a priority and we can talk to the candidates about how best to accomplish that and there are probably a lot of ways to do that. In the meantime, I have every confidence that Mr. Laimbach will do his best work for us, but I think this is a big decision that should wait for our new permanent city manager in a matter of, of months.
Now, in a way, maybe the final decision, I think, could wait, but I think the process needs to get underway, either through Mr. Laimbach himself and have something presented to the council, you know, and if it's, and then I think the council can make a decision whether or not they want to vote on it at that point or vote on it, you know, down the road. But I think if we get it in line, it's something then that the, any candidates will be looking at when they do apply for the job and it's something that we would have, whether or not we accept it or how it looks, and it's just a draft format, whatever. But I can't see any reason why we can't move forward in trying to get some information. And, and it's not costing us any money right now just to get some ideas from Mr. Laimbach until, until he, until, so we can decide whether or not we need to even spend any money. If we got to spend tons of money, then I'm going to say now, or if we can do something in-house and under his recommendation, actually, we can move with that.
And if you like, in the meantime, I can still make inquiries, like from the Florida League of Cities and say, there's some options for you, at least as groundwork for my successor.
And we're getting into goals and objective settings and like I said, like Mrs. Stoll said, there might be some good opportunity to be talking about that, thorn, those sessions if, when we have those down the road. Number three, Mr. Slavy.
And I will not bring this up again, so, and I'm not very close to this subject, I just know that a lot of people that are close to me are very close to it. So we had a lot of discussion a year and a half ago about this 35-foot buildings. A lot of people care about downtown Mount Dora and there's some people who believe that everything I'm saying is just a waste of time. And, and I'm not sure. And one of my thoughts is that we consider, you know, just have a discussion around having our attorney review this whole, we changed the dealio out on the highway and that created an opening that, or loophole that might now endanger our downtown. And then put this to bed so that, I don't know if you, and of course, well, I don't know if you get people talking to you about this, but it's very important to them and some people still believe that this boogeyman or thing is around and I'd certainly like to put it to bed and be done with it.
We discussed this and we were going to try to get you up to speed and Vince can address that for you.
Right now. Correct, whatever, I'm in with you tomorrow.
Right.
They'll give a summary of it, but I'll give the crib notes.
Well, the reason I'm bringing up now is, we need as a board, rather than saying, hey, we'd like you guys to do this, we need to say, we vote five to zero that we direct the city attorney to do this by this date, so that we don't just kind of be talking about it a year from now, kind of, you know.
The way your comp plan is set up, it actually has detailed height and policies. And then it's echoed in the land of Elmer Coe by each zoning district. So the two together are compatible of restricting the height at 35. Now, there are other districts, the Highland one, the 65, the employment center, the innovation has no cap.
Okay.
And then we have the golden triangle and the, and by Highland, those are kind of the scenarios of zoning with different heights. But the downtown with the historic preservation is one more layer, because they'd have to go through historic preservation of massing and building and bulk and height. So the layers of restrictions and regulations and with the highest levels of comprehensive plan have the numbers in it, 35 feet, 25 within 100 feet of Lake Dora. So analysis of how your comp plan and land development code are already set up, the restrictions to protect height are there.
So, so, well, while everything you say is probably true, or completely true, I just remember reading where, where the word's virtually impossible, we're talking about the chances of something happening downtown, of the 35-foot, it was virtually impossible. And it wasn't impossible, it was virtually impossible. And it came out of the city. So that's where I'm just saying, I hope to live another 30, 40, 50 years and, and I don't want to be around here when, when there's something over 35 feet is there. So I am beating a dead horse and I guess I need someone to just whack me over.
Yeah, virtually impossible, I mean, it was a theater expression during the, well, the theater project.
Yeah.
So to speak, but in the heat of all that, it's not, not technically speaking, the strict letter of the law of your comp plan and your land development code do not have those languages. It says 35.
Okay.
There's not, oh, if you wriggle a little bit, you can, it's, and it's, it's in the comp plan. And for tomorrow's meeting, I have all the zoning districts for you, the historic preservation documents and then some other little materials of the comp plan, so you can see all the highlighted in yellow and yellow. But we've, planning department feels confident, you're protected on the height. And Mr. Groot can look at it.
Well, I, I can look at things, but I can tell you this, if comprehensive plans are, just like you hear the Supreme Court and you want strict constructionist and all that, some people do, well, comprehensive plans under Florida law are strictly construed. So there's no wriggle room. Land development regulations are a different story, but your comp plan is your constitution and it's strictly construed. So what Vince was just saying about the 35 feet, if it's in there, in any level of strength, it'll be sustained and protect, if that's the goal, the, the height limitation.
And as that planner, most policies you deal with in comp plan are general, you will protect your height downtown. This case, Mount Dora says yours will be capped at no more limited 35. And the 25 with Lake Dora.
And the areas, the, the, the areas concerning the restrictions, you know, the areas where the height restrictions are affected are set in stone. In other words, there's no sort of goosey language like generally along or.
No, it's in the comp plan, you, you shall be restricted in this, this 35.
And as you know, the, the policy adopted is provide same information to everybody. We'll make sure you get a copy so you know exactly, as we will for Councilmember Slavy of, of our regulations.
Mr. Groot, you're going to be reviewing the comp plan, I guess, and I don't know, maybe all at one time, but a different segment, so.
Yes.
Whenever, whenever, yeah, I think you're, you know the language that Mrs. Tillot's probably referring to. If you would just maybe pass it on to Mr. Groot and so you could maybe, in your conversations and whatever, in whatever conversations that you have, you can maybe comment on that to make sure that the protections that Mr. Slavy and Mrs. Tillot's talking about are in there.
Absolutely.
Which I think they are according to what you're saying now, so, but you can just confirm that, because you're going to be doing it anyway at that point, you can comment on it. And Mary, if I may.
Yes, please.
Now, I'm at the diocese. Every seven years, the city undergoes their evaluation appraisal report of the comprehensive plan that's coming up on the horizon, just as a, and then it's coming on the horizon.
Oh, horizon.
As in planning terms, so we'll be looking at the comprehensive plan and all the failures and successes and tightening up things. So again, another long shot crystal ball, we'll have more opportunities in the comprehensive plan in the next few years as evaluation required to by state law.
And not to speak too much, but I am more than I usually do tonight, but.
Speak, speak.
On the, on the clock. But as you focus on strategic planning and bill setting and all that, this EOR process will link right into it because that's, that's, that's your bill setting, that's your comprehensive plan. A couple of years ago, we had a problem with language and it took about four or five meetings to get it straightened out. So if there's been any changes, we, that's where Mr. Slavy's at, that's what we're all about. We want to make sure that the language is precise.
Absolutely.
That proof ain't happening, kind of the thing.
Absolutely.
And it took a while to get this straightened out a while back and we don't want to have it go backwards.
I got you. Okay, any, Mr.
I promised three and I delivered.
Great, very much. Okay. And your meetings, they ain't in the morning, by the way.
Eight o'clock in the morning, son.
Yes. Mr. Krill, anything?
You know, we, I, first of all, I want to apologize to Mr. Slavy, I shouldn't have said what I said and that was my fault.
I cannot accept your policy because I am a knucklehead and it is okay to smack me upside the head and I appreciate that, so, but in your, thank you.
But I, I continue to be impressed with our city staff, meeting after meeting, impressed that the police officers and others in the department are taking time out of their business schedules for this Relay for Life, that, that's important, that's community building. Impressed that the finance department under Mr. Shepherd's leadership came with a clean audit and yes, there are always things that can be tweaked and improved and everything, but that's an impressive achievement for a budget the size of ours with the staff, small staff that he has. And also impressed with Mike Kaufman and his civic pride and his bucket list to make such a wonderful, you know, we've been talking about public art, that's public art. And, and so I'm, I'm proud to live in this city and I would live here if I was the city manager.
I'll ask one more question.
Sure.
Have we received any timeframe on our mandatory recurrent training from?
Well, that's exactly what Mr. Groot and I have been discussing. It's an annual training, I'm not, they raised, at first it, there was a, like a 60-day or 90-day requirement, but I believe that was.
No, you, when you file your financial disclosure in July, you're going to have to check that you did it, that's what it boils down to.
That's the deadline, so.
Well, yeah, that was aside from, from what I'm saying, we had a, something relatively new where we were required.
That's what I'm talking about.
Annual ethics training.
Ethics, public records and sunshine law.
That's it. The legislature called it ethics, but, or is known as ethics, but the list of subjects in the statute is public records, sunshine law, but it's all lumped under ethics. It started last year and I, I attended that and I just wanted when our. But every year you have to check the box.
Calendar year.
Yes.
Do they do it?
I just wanted to take with that.
Yeah, we're just putting on the body of it in house.
Mr. Krill and I are set for this year because we went to the EMO class and, and we got a note back saying, keep this note for when you, for July, when you submit your financials.
Yes. Yes, you're all set. Did you get into the advanced meeting yet?
No, they, they went into more of a, it was, it was the leadership, the advanced, that was when I was on council before I did the advanced, this was the leadership and that was a totally different kind of training than the ethics and everything like that.
All right.
So you're just sitting at that point, we got ethics, so.
Okay.
A little different than the advanced.
I'm going to the advanced the end of this month, so I'll let you know. I think it's mostly budget, but so beware, I might be really smart by them on the budget.
Do you have any comments that you want to make? Hold on, hold on, don't call me yet. Give the, give the, give the mayor a chance here. There was an item that the, I know Mrs. Tillitt was asking for a while back and I'd like to address that one and if we can get a consensus here from the, you know, from the council to have Mr. Landback put on maybe our June 7th agenda, a presentation to the council as to why are, that we work under a, why we work under complaint-driven code enforcement as opposed to being a proactive system and, and why it is under the police department versus the planning zone. These are questions I've been asked as a constituent, I think other people maybe ask them, and I know the police chief probably, we talked before and, and I'm going to be honest with you and I have always had that question, but this is one instance, when I went on that, that thing with the police chief early one morning and I saw the need why we have code enforcement underneath our police department, but I'd like to have maybe some kind of a presentation and that's why I'm giving, you know, some time here to develop something small, you know, maybe 15-minute type presentation at one of our meetings on June 7th if we can, have it ready for then and I would really appreciate that and if the council agrees with that, I'd like your consensus also to, so we can ask Mr. Landback to get that to go and to put on the agenda for the June 7th meeting. And the other item I have, we've already addressed that about the goals and objectives. The other thing maybe just to mention that we, something that you were concerned with, Mr. Landback and myself met with the, the county representatives and, and Mr. Sanders fellow was also involved in the meeting about the Fifth Avenue project that we've been looking to do. It hopefully within maybe a week, we might have a, some kind of a, an answer and, and a definite plan and that we can bring back to the council for approval at the May 3rd meeting. And, and just to caution you that hopefully the plan that you, that this board would approve it because if we can, it'll have to be, because we can start work as soon as June if we agree on the plan. So the county's ready to go with, they have a contractor already in line that's going to be starting another project and they can clue our, so if the numbers work out and Mr. Landback's so successful in what he's going to be doing over the next week, we should have something ready for everybody.
Oh, we have the whole enchilada.
But you want to get, well, it's going to be enough for the, it's going to be enough that you're going to get four, let's put it that way. You'll, you'll, you'll be okay with it. You're welcome. Anything else from council?
I got one thing.
Go right ahead, Mr. Pumba.
I'd like to.
Just hold on a moment again.
I'm going to stop that.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'd like to thank Mr. Rowett for his unending pursuit of the Fifth Avenue project. I've been to council meetings for years and I've heard him ask it over and over, so congratulations for getting it right where it's at.
I want to thank the mayor.
And I'll thank Mr. Landback. So, no, we, our county, our county representative, Leslie Campion, is very instrumental in arranging the, some of the meetings that we needed to go, needed to get done along with the, the staff from the county. And so it's a, it's a, it's a joint, joint effort and to say at least there's no one individual deserves any more praise than anybody else, so, but I appreciate the, so whatever compliment you give me, I'll pass on, it's equally shared by everybody at that point. So anyway, make a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, we're, we're done.
Bye.
Thank you.